Summer programs, extended day programs, enrichment courses, and driver education. We're a period program in terms of advocacy for the adult car as well as providing enrichment opportunities for youth beyond the school day. ACE and the Fairfax County, Fairfax County Adult High School Programs help to create a dynamic learning community for all generations of Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrett. I appreciate that. I now call on Ms. Tolan for recognition of teacher and staff appreciation.
Hello. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week 2020. This started on Sunday, May 3, 2020. National Teacher Appreciation Week is a week-long celebration in recognition of teachers and the contributions they make to education and society. It is held in the first full week of May of every year and provides an opportunity for students, their parents, and school principals to show their appreciation for the hard work that teachers do and the long hours many of them put in. At this time of distance learning, there are many school staff beyond the classroom teachers who have worked extraordinarily hard to keep our students learning. FCPS is proud to recognize all of our teachers as well as the school-based professionals who have made distance learning possible. Especially during this time of social distancing, FCPS school staff are going above and beyond to help children learn remotely. Typically during this time of year, teachers receive thank you gifts and notes of gratitude from their students, and schools organize events and celebrations to mark the occasion. It's a bit of a challenge this year due to social distancing, but there has never been a more appropriate time to show your gratitude for the staff in FCPS. While schools are closed and students are at home, we're reminded just how incredible teachers are. We've always been amazed by the hard work and the impact of teachers, and we may never have fully realized just how tough their job was until now. So, thank you to the educators in your life participating in National Teacher Appreciation Week. Please thank them. There are plenty of meaningful ways to show gratitude outside of the classroom, and it's easy to get kids involved, too. Have them write a note, draw a picture, or create a video of thanks, or maybe even coordinate with other parents in the classes if they just say thank you from all the students together. At this time, on behalf of our school board and administration, it is my pleasure to recognize our FCPS teachers and staff and to offer a heartfelt thank you for all that you are doing and continue to do for our students. We welcome this opportunity to highlight the energy, dedication, and vision that you are contributing to our school system. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Beautiful recognition for an important week. The next order of business is citizen participation. Today, two citizens have signed up to address the board, and we have two video testimonies. I first call on Kimberly Adams.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Corbett Sanders, school board members, Dr. Braybrand, and leadership team. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am the president of our union, the Fairfax Education Association. I want to begin by thanking all of you for honoring our teachers and staff this week. It has been a most unprecedented time in our lives as educators, and it is heartening to see how much the community has come to recognize the extraordinary contribution of our teachers and school staff. This pandemic is tragic, but if we are to look on the bright side, it is to see how hard we have worked to ensure the future for our students and how much we've accomplished in a short time. I know that some media and social media have focused attention on the shortcomings of our system. Although if we truly look at what has been accomplished and pause for a moment to acknowledge our successes, we now have a majority of our students learning synchronously on a weekly basis, and asynchronous learning has been accessed by nearly all 190,000 students working remotely with over 20,000 staff supporting that work. We now have systems in place that have addressed the technology glitches of just two weeks ago. We have closed out the third quarter and are preparing to finalize grades to be sent home in report cards to every student in our system. We have continued to develop high-quality resources on the cable channels, paper packets, Google classrooms, and blackboard sites. I am proud of the work that our system has done to remain connected to our students during this Teacher Appreciation Week. I am thankful for all the teachers and staff who have held this system together and moved us forward. The next steps are not going to be easy, but we've begun the planning and have the policies and procedures in place for progress. I look forward to more collaboration as we address our return to school. The FEA is bringing the resources we have accessed nationally and at the state level to help support this as we continue in partnership during an uncertain time. We are using data and science to inform our decisions, creating multiple pathways for success and learning from our mistakes as we do all of the time. We must continue to remind you, though, that many times regulations that impact your employees are changed while either not seeking the input of the employee organizations or ignoring that input. In just last week, HR conveyed to us potential changes to Regulations 4429 and 4493 related to progressive discipline and standards of conduct. Months ago, we opposed several of those changes and have already conveyed our opposition and look forward to having discussions of these suggestions with administration before changes are adopted. As we move forward toward the ability to collectively bargain in 2021, we need to start developing the skills and mechanisms to effectively collaborate now. This work ahead is critical to addressing the learning challenges and finding creative solutions to problems we have never faced. It is what we have spent the past decade preparing for. This is 21st century learning, and we are ready. As we return to school, whether or not to a virtual classroom this fall, we will test the work we have been undertaking to support students and staff's emotional health, mindfulness, problem-solving, all the while continuing to develop high-quality instruction and deliver on what our students need. Thankfully, we are Fairfax County Public Schools, and this is what we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Hall, Norm Hall?
Good afternoon. This is Norm Hall speaking to you today as an individual, not as an advocate from SEPTA, and not as a person who cares about pay and conditions of FCPS's non-contract hourly workers, and not even as a representative of SEIUVA Local 512. I want to follow up on the untenable position that affects me as a SAC teacher. Like all SAC staff, I was scheduled to work a full-day schedule on Monday, March 16 during what would have been a teacher workday. Families were notified about this plan just days before, and like what ended up happening on Friday, nobody knew how to make alternative arrangements for childcare. That was hard, but I am relieved because had schools not closed on that Friday, we were faced with having every SAC center operating at full capacity, and meeting childcare ratios would have been challenging. Worse, who knows what SAC programmed children and families would have brought in with them on that day? How confident could we be that none would have had COVID-19 with them? If you know me, you know I wasn't going to be shy about questioning county leadership, and on the morning of March 13, I requested an opportunity to discuss plans for our operations the following Monday. Governor Northam settled the issue by closing school for two weeks. I don't know what would have happened with my appeals had he not. More importantly, we will not know how many or how much community spread would have taken place on that day. I understand that at next Monday's work session, FCPS staff will present scenarios on reopening schools. Meanwhile, there are administrators of SAC who have communicated with families about the possibility of summer SAC opening on June 22. I simply don't understand why there's been a failure to communicate with all segments of this school community about the health and safety issues associated with having programs in school buildings. Isn't there responsibility for all people who work in your facilities, especially if they are responsible for thousands of children who are your students before and after the morning and afternoon bells ring? My impression is that all elementary schools are totally shut down, and that instructional and principal staff efforts now are being targeted on distance learning and approaches the school what its health conditions merit. I totally get that. But I also know that when you don't have stakeholders involved with planning decisions that affect them, it usually shows up later, and not in a good way. Where do we fit into your concept of caring culture? There are many SAC teachers like me who are ready to review plans for school use, whether they start in June, July, August, or September. How about giving us that chance before rolling out communication plans with your families? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. We now have two videos. The first one is with Tina Williams.
Good afternoon, school board members. I'm Tina Williams, president of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers Union. On behalf of our thousands of members that work tirelessly to serve Fairfax County Public Schools, I want to wish you all a Happy Educator Appreciation Week. Our members work hard every day to serve our students and community, but during this unprecedented period, they are working harder than ever to keep our students safe and our schools running remotely. Our educators are stepping up every day to connect and support our students and families in innovative ways. Their roles and the way that they perform their job duties have transformed in many ways, but the dedication and commitment that they have for our public schools is stronger than ever. Many of our parents have a new understanding for the work our educators do. Some even say that we deserve a billion dollars. Our educators go into this session knowing that they will not make a fortune, but they will make a difference in people's lives. It is critical that we demonstrate that we value and honor these professionals. Our educators work diligently to serve our students, families, and communities without asking for thanks. However, they are instrumental to our communities. They are true champions, and they deserve gratitude and appreciation. What I hear from members every day is that "thank you" is appreciated, but are just words. Words don't mean anything unless they are backed by action. The best way for our school board in Fairfax County to demonstrate their appreciation for these professionals is to invest in them. Recovering from the coronavirus pandemic will take more resources, not less. To support our educators in schools and to demonstrate that we truly value this profession, we urge the school board to adopt a budget that funds our schools, funds our educators, and invest in our community. Our kids deserve this. Our educators deserve this. And we urge Fairfax County to deliver on this. For Educator Appreciation Week, we urge the school board to demonstrate its values of educators by adopting a budget that invests in them by increasing mental health support, investing in the most vulnerable populations, and keeping your employees whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Ruby?
Good evening. My name is Robert Riggs. I want to speak about the policy 4530 and the No Change Memo that addresses employee organizations. My organization, FCPS Pride, has been a certified employee organization for almost five years. We advocate for LGBTQ people in this system and to a small degree connect people with officials in the school system who can address particular concerns or problems that arise. It's great that we have an LGBTQ adult organization, and it's great that we have gender and sexuality alliances in the high school and safe space clubs in the middle school. But these organizations are volunteer and not given additional staff support. My weeks during this pandemic have been filled with heartbreak reports of crises and tragedies that have happened to LGBTQ children and adults in our system and the area. I don't know what to do about these incidents except be heartbroken. I know we have systems of support for children, staff, and families, but there's no indication that the people who offer this help are trained or familiar with the particular concerns of LGBTQ people. No one wants to call someone for help to whom they have to teach about themselves or people like themselves. I do not know what the solution is. I only know the problem. It is a genuine crisis. Perhaps we could have trained and advertised support personnel, or better yet, we could have official integrated LGBTQ liaisons under the chief equity officer. The District of Columbia Public School System has a terrific model for LGBTQ liaisons that we could follow. Please think about my vulnerable community during this time. I don't know much more. I don't know how much more heartbreak we can take. Thank you for listening.
I now call on Ms. Kuateng for Student Representative Matters.
You'll have to forgive me because I wasn't sure there was supposed to be student matters, but I can still speak. For the past couple of weeks, of course, people know I've been working with Ms. Omege on corn strings, and we've been able to kind of put out information to the community that's been given by, of course, the county. And recently, we've been talking about, I've been talking to many seniors with a bunch of other students and trying to get their input about senior events because, of course, that is a big point of interest and a big point of concern for many of the graduating class. And since that's basically what I've been doing for the past couple of weeks, I think I'm just going to leave it off by just encouraging students and basically the entire county to remain vigilant and also remain safe. Because I remember I put this out on my Twitter. I said, "We can always recover from, we can always recover the economy, even we can even recover from a depression, but we can never recover the lives that are lost in this current pandemic." So it's important that we stay together by staying home and by staying separated, not separated socially, but separated physically in order to ensure that we are as safe as possible, but also making sure that you're reaching out to your loved ones and making sure that everyone's still in the right headspace and still doing all right. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Kuateng. There are adopted rules of parliamentary procedure. Robert's rules provides for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 3.01. Award a contract for the McLean High School modular relocation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, PBS Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $1,948,400 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 3.02. Adopt the policies on the No Change Memo as detailed in the agenda item. Text shown in strike-through indicate policies removed from the No Change Memo at the request of a board member. These policies will be further reviewed by the Governance Committee. Item 3.03. Appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Four. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 4.01. Adopt the fiscal year 2021 approved budget as detailed in the fiscal year 2021 advertised budget modified by the adjustments included in the agenda item. 4.02. Authorize the division superintendent, chief operating officer, or the assistant superintendent for Facilities and Transportation Services, any one of whom may act without the others, in consultation with legal counsel for the school system to negotiate, execute, and administer, on behalf of the school board, a lease agreement for the food and nutrition services program for office warehouse space located at 6840 Industrial Road, Springfield, Virginia 22151, including all related documentation within available funds. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I just want to share a couple of items of note for you all. First of all, I want to share what many of the speakers have already so well said. It's Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week nationally, and we're so proud of everything our staff are doing and our teachers are doing here in FCPS to go above and beyond. I appreciate being a part of the FCPS family and their support for everything we're doing to serve students and their families. So, we've done a lot. We did little videos, and I know schools have been doing videos celebrating their hard work, and I really am very touched, too, to see so many people in the community who are personally reaching out, which is something I shared earlier this week and encouraged our parents and students to do, to personally reach out to a teacher or staff member and just say thank you, because we are in an unprecedented time, and those thank yous mean so much to all of us here in FCPS. I also want to share a little bit about communication and outreach, which are important during these challenging times. I've been doing several town halls, some with other school board members, some with the PTA, council PTAs, and also with SEPTA, and have really enjoyed getting a chance to answer questions, questions about how we're going to move forward with return to school, and how we're continuing to support students as we do our distance learning programming here during this fourth quarter. So, I really appreciate all of those opportunities to communicate. I want the public to know that I have been asked by the state superintendent to be one of three co-chairs on a committee that is looking at accreditation for next year. As you know, the state superintendent did remove or waive accreditation this spring. I'm part of a task force to look at it as we get into the next school year, and we'll be looking at recommendations that may include keeping accreditation but using additional growth factors for students. But I also want to share with the community that we will be including a recommendation that would waive accreditation for next year as well, and begin to focus when kids return in the fall on their social-emotional needs and where they are as they have experienced this COVID-19 crisis. I also want to just mention very briefly that we are going to be sharing with the board on Monday our return to school scenarios, and we'll also be sharing with the school board our options for summer, because we know we have got a lot of things coming up for folks to plan for for the summer. We want to give you our best thinking and our best recommendations. There will be options, but we will be bringing you our best recommendations for summer programming, as well as begin to look at scenarios for return to school in the fall, and what are the full range of scenarios, along with the considerations for each of those scenarios. I do want the public to know that there is a state task force that is looking at return to school. I am very hopeful that that state task force will be wrapping up early in June. So, Monday's meeting will be only preliminary sharing of our scenarios. We'll be looking for additional support and detail from the state to help inform our final thinking about how we will approach return to school in the fall, which I know is something everybody wants to know about. And again, we'll start that conversation on Monday, and I hope that we'll be in a position that we can finish what the planning options will be in June so that folks can plan for August in the fall. And then finally, I just want to also share with that that I have reached out and was delighted to participate with my region superintendents as we are talking across school districts to look at all of our different return to school scenarios, our considerations, what our concerns are for children, for staff members, for parents, for our communities, and to the degree possible, we would love to have a regional approach as we make these decisions. We all understand how much these issues about return to school impact so many other decisions here in Northern Virginia. It was a real opportunity just this week to have those conversations in more detail, and I look forward to sharing with you updates around that in the weeks ahead. Again, thank you for an amazing staff and Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm very grateful for everyone in FCPS and everything they're doing to support our students and families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on Dr. Anderson.
Good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, I do want to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I echo the sentiments that were shared earlier by our speakers. It has been extraordinary to see how much the efforts of our teachers have impacted our students. I see it in my own home. The phone calls, the emails, the postcards even that have been received are so appreciated. Your deep care for our students is obvious, and thank you for that as a parent. I also want to highlight that Um, I also want to highlight that I am very glad that we seem to have turned the corner on distance learning in terms of the access um issues that we experienced earlier on. I'm happy to see that those numbers continue to climb as more and more of our students participate. I want to share very briefly some of the activities that I have been engaging in the past few weeks outside of the numerous board meetings that we've had virtually. Um, I do want to say thank you to Supervisor Gross for our joint um budget town hall that we had a few, a couple of weeks ago. That was very helpful to hear the needs of the community and to hear what their concerns were. Um, I've also been in attendance at several virtual PTA meetings, um, as well as a very robust and um just very impressive advisory council meeting that was held by the staff of Justice High School, where they went into so great details regarding how um the supports that are being provided for students during this time. And so a special thank you to all of our counselors and the counselors there at Justice, as well as the social workers for all of their outreach efforts. You have really have done a marvelous job in not letting any stone remain unturned to make sure that you reach out to your students, so thank you for that. Lastly, I want to say that along with everyone else, um, we are very anxious to return to school. Uh, but I want to caution and echo what Kimberly shared earlier, we do want to make sure we do this safely in a matter that is going to not jeopardize us as a community. Um, so I'm looking forward to hearing those plans um to be shared on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Cohen?
Sorry, still, still working on technology in this household. Um, I just want to say thank you to um a- as my colleagues um have already stated, Ms. Tolan and Dr. Anderson, um, wanted to just say thank you to all of our teachers. As most of you know, uh, not only was my grandmother a teacher for forty years, but both my parents were teachers. And I was incredibly proud to carry on the family tradition. Being a teacher changed who I was forever. And I view our system with that lens now, and I'm very grateful along with several of my colleagues to bring that teacher perspective to the board. It seems appropriate that in the middle of this unprecedented time in our country that we celebrate Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. I have never been more proud nor more appreciative of all our teachers and staff than I am today. The flexibility and grace that you've shown under extreme stress and untenable workloads um has been much often um more than we deserve. Thank you, and it's not enough just to tell you that you're our heroes, it is incumbent upon us to show you our support in policy and in our budget. Uh, I want to say thank you to all who have participated in our town halls, our PTA roundtables, um, and those of you who have invited us to participate in yours, thank you. My next town hall will be hosted with Stella Pukarski on May twenty-first at seven PM. And we'll send a link out a little bit closer in. And then finally, I just wanted to say uh Ramadan Kareem to all who celebrate. I know this is such a difficult um celebration this year, and it must be incredibly hard not to be together as a community and even get together as extended family during this time. So my thoughts are with you, and I still hope that you're able to find meaning and joy um in this time of year. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Mr. Renek Kofax?
Echoing my colleagues um uh to all of our amazing teachers out there, thank you for all that you do um in this challenging time. We know you are there um with your own children sometimes, but you still have a positivity. Um, your nurturing ways, the things that I have seen um o- online, things that I have heard from my teachers' friends that you are doing. You are all going above and beyond and being so courageous during these very difficult times. I thank you for your positivity, your caring ways, and we at Fairfax County are so fortunate to have you and our entire staffs who have been able to allow us to to where we are on our uh at distance learning at a place where um we have so many families who are able to get online and who are appreciating their experience. So thank you again for all that you do, and I look forward to uh continuing to work with you as we are uh back. Um, I do want to echo that I will continue to keep safety at the forefront for and every one of our students and their families to ensure that as we move um past the end of this year and into the next school year, um, what that may very, very different, most likely than we've been used to at the start of the other school year. So I look forward to hearing Dr. Braybrands um and his team's uh, you know, analysis of what should happen. And I look forward to working with all of you out there, as well as my colleagues, to make sure we have the optimum um system in place for us to get back to learn.
Thank you, Ms. Renek Kofax. Mr. Fresh?
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Uh, as we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, I hope everyone at home will join me in thanking our world-class educators for everything they do to help our students thrive. In ways big and small, they have proven their resilience, reliability, and resourcefulness. These past few weeks, I've watched uh cooped up at home as my partner Evan has returned to teaching uh his students remotely. I am so proud of him and of all of our teachers for the incredible work they continue to do despite these very challenging circumstances. I'm also grateful that we continue to move beyond our technology failures and challenges with online instruction expanding significantly in the last week. Um, nearly a hundred and fifty-five thousand real-time teacher-led sessions with nearly a million attendees. I'm grateful for the tireless work of our staff who continue working around the clock to make sure that our technology works so teachers can teach and students can learn. Uh, years after finishing high school, it may seem easy for some to downplay the significance of the class of twenty twenty missing out on so many rites of passage, from prom to the last big performance at school and graduation. But for seniors, these moments still carry tremendous importance. We owe it to them to make sure that the best, to make the best out of uh this disappointing situation and celebrate their accomplishments. Students, principals, and others are clamoring for some form of in-person commencement ceremonies when it is again safe to do so, and I agree, when it is again safe to do so. I'll be watching these issues closely as they develop. Your continued input is critical because of the nature of social distancing, it is important now more than ever that we continue hearing from our constituents. Uh, in recent weeks, I've had the opportunity to visit virtually with PTAs in Providence District. I've also held a series of small town hall meetings with Providence District educators and staff. Um, this weekend, Providence District Supervisor Dahlia Palchik and I will be hosting a town hall for Providence District residents on Saturday uh afternoon, so I hope you will attend to that. You can find more information about that on my official social media channels, Carl Frisch FCPS on Facebook and Twitter. Um, additionally, if you'd like to have a one-on-one meeting, I've put aside forty hours in the month of May for one-on-one meetings with constituents. You can find information about signing up for those either by phone or video conference on my social media as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Oh, thank you. Uh, I too want to echo the comments of my colleagues and say thank you to all of our warriors in our schools and working to make sure that we deliver, continue to deliver education to all of our students. And we're learning, we're in the process of learning, and we are getting better. I also would like to direct their attention to a uh post that I just put on Twitter from Senator Warner, who also wanted to say thank you to all of our staff members, and hopefully uh you can find me at KeysGamara on Twitter to uh see his video. Uh, just to give a quick update of some things that have happened. Uh, we weren't able to give reports on our board committees, but the audit committee did meet and reviewed the, some of the work that we have been doing. Most importantly, we had the opportunity to go over the language for the RFP, for the Special Education Review. And that language um uh has gone on and was posted to uh get a bid on this past Monday. Uh, we have reached out to stakeholders as well as board members for comment, and we will continue to accept comment. Uh, under these difficult circumstances, it has been difficult to have a public meeting and to have to allow people to give us their comments, so we will continue to collect those and hand that information over to the person who accepts our bid. Um, I, we, I've also had an opportunity to interface with our community on a number of occasions. I've heard ver- virtual town halls with employees, with members of the community. I will be planning my next one with Ms. Corbett Chair, Ms. Corbett Karen Corbett Sanders, and we will have an opportunity to hear from employees and that. Uh, and I am also setting up office hours. Um, that will be announced in my newsletter. Our committee meetings uh have, are beginning to, continuing to um meet, and the Title One Committee Meeting is coming up soon. I look forward to working with everyone, and I'm, I'm grateful that we are continuing to focus on safety for all of our students as well as our staff members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I want to certainly join all of my colleagues in their eloquent words of support and appreciation for our amazing teachers and all of the school-based staff who've been working so hard alongside of them. In particular, as we've known in recent weeks, our school-based technology specialists have done a Herculean job of enabling our teachers to connect directly with their students um in their homes and with each other. And uh, as we heard from our families, that has probably been one of the most important ways that we've tried to restore some normalcy um in these very um un-normal times um for learning. So as we mark uh the middle of this fourth quarter um and the middle midpoint of our distance learning, uh, I want to echo what other board members have said. It is hearing from our community, our teachers, our stakeholders, including families um and parents, what's working, what do we need to still continue to improve upon? Uh, because every day and every week, as we proceed through the end of the school year, it matters. And so uh please bring, continue to bring that information. Um, like my colleagues, I too have really enjoyed being able to continue engaging with the community in virtual settings. Um, not only participating in a community meeting with Senator Chat Peterson and Delegate Vivian Watts and Supervisor James Walkinshaw to talk with the community about so much that's on their minds, but also Supervisor Walkinshaw sponsored an additional uh community meeting that we had just this Monday, to also talk about the budget impact on schools and county government, as well as the COVID closures and how we can continue to best serve our community during this time. Um, I also want to uh express my appreciation to FCFT. It was really wonderful to meet with over twenty of your members uh to talk about their concerns and what they're experiencing on the front lines. Uh, that was very helpful, and I look forward to sharing my notes uh with my colleagues on what I gleaned from those dialogues. I do want to share with my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand that um I am hearing concerns, especially from our kindergarten teachers, um, that the way in which we're wanting to deliver direct instruction, uh, this one-size-fits-all uh where teachers will sit down for an hour at a time, I think it's problematic. It's one thing to have high school students or even middle school students sit for an hour at a time. It is more difficult for our youngest students. So I do think that's something we need to look at um as quickly as possible and work with our teachers in finding um better solutions and better approaches to that. Um, and then I, I guess finally, I just want to share that uh I, it really resonates for me, something that I've known for a long time. Uh, our words of praise, I, I recognize are important, uh, but it is going to be our actions. And so for the board, for us, our superintendent and central office staff, we do need to continue to listen as carefully as we can to those who are directly delivering services to our students and identify ways in which uh we can do it in the best manner possible. Um, next Monday, when we get the return to learn plan, it will be crucial that we hear from our educators on what that will look like in the fall. And finally, as Budget Chair, I do want to reassure the public, as was raised earlier, that I am very proud of this board's continued focus that in the new budget year, our commitment is how can we get as much funding and supports into the classroom for the students and teachers, including the need for social emotional supports. So with that, uh, please know that again, if you need uh to reach me at any time, uh, please do contact my office or email me, and I look forward to next Monday joining uh my colleague Rajna Seismarheiser for a evening town hall as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Merron?
Hello. So this first Teacher Appreciation Week that I'm in office, I'm humbled that I can do more than ever before to support our educators as they bring their care, their dedication, and professionalism to our children, including my own children now and all year long. Um, I do believe that this pandemic has shown a light on just how critical teachers are and school is for so many aspects of healthy family and community life. So thank you, teachers. I think about you daily. Um, I too am very eager to look at the return to school plans that are being shared on Monday, as many constituents have been asking about, and so we can determine what the next phase of learning in life will be in Fairfax County, and of course, doing so safely and with mindfulness to academic needs and also mental and emotional needs will be critical. So I look forward to participating in those discussions and, as always, remain eager to hear from the public about your thoughts. So I do have a, an update on one advisory committee, the Adult and Community Education Committee, for which I'm the liaison. We were able to meet last night for the first time since closure. And um, the, a lot of the courses unfortunately did have to be canceled, given that they happened in person. However, ACE was able to still offer one hundred and sixty online classes, so they were converted to online classes. And as you uh may have heard in the earlier recognition, since this is adult and continuing ed-bun in the month of May, these classes are really critical to help adults get new career training, um, language skills, all sorts of different credentials that will really be needed in this time, as many people will need to be pulled into different sorts of, you know, jobs and career needs. So I'm very eager to see that we can continue to support ACE as a school district because it does provide these critical credentials for our um adults. And uh, in other committee news, uh, next week, we'll be having our Governance Committee meeting for the first time since closure, and that's on Wednesday, May thirteen. Um, and on Tuesday, May nineteenth, I'll be leading as chair for the Public Engagement Committee, um, also the first time since closure. So we have a lot that we are looking to do, particularly with public engagement, uh, there's been some great discussions happening uh through our Fairfax County Council PTAs, the FCCPTA, and um among staff. And we want to make sure that the parents' engagement is done, um, you know, in an authentic way, so we can learn and listen to what our parents need. So I'm eager to get to work on that with my colleagues. So this Friday, I'm looking forward to joining virtually the Aldrin Elementary Community along with Dr. Braybrand as we honor our teachers and staff. And um, I also have a new Facebook page up, so it's a, at Facebook, it's FCPS Hunter Mill. So please do like that, um, getting that populated with lots of good information. And finally, I, I too want to wish a meaningful Ramadan for those observing. As I try daily to share gratitude in these times, I appreciate the reflection of others doing so as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merron. Ms. Omeish?
Thank you. Um, I echo my colleagues' comments, of course, to appreciate our teachers and all the staff who've been working so hard in the buildings. Uh, my own mother is a teacher, um, I have seen her struggles with virtual learning, having to record and then realize it doesn't, you know, the audio didn't work and re-record and connect with all her students. Um, so I can only imagine, of course, hearing from our teachers' unions and other staff across the county, uh, the challenges. So we appreciate you, and in this time especially, uh, hear you and, and recognize your struggles. And certainly have been receiving your many emails and look forward to continuing to advocate for you in the ways that we can, as my colleague said, through action. Um, I also want to thank our speakers for pointing out uh our public, um, our public guest speakers uh for pointing out things that uh we could think about and flagging concerns that they have. Um, and thank, you know, Laura Jane for starting, Melanie also for wishing, and I will also wish Ramadan Mubarak to all our families out there as I observe myself and am fasting uh on this call. So in addition, so I wanted to also acknowledge, one of the things that happened today, which is the McLean contract for the sake of the community. I know that there may be some confusion or questions regarding this. I wanted to just highlight that, you know, my colleague Elaine, I want to recognize her and her hard work with staff to really find a solution that will bring us from a timeline that would have otherwise been up to eight years to one that is shorter, that is bringing reliable solutions, and that's addressing the oversight for the five overcrowded high schools, you know, making sure that all five of them have a plan moving forward in a reasonable timeframe. So again, just want to recognize that. And I know that staff will continue to provide information and will continue to, as a board and as a team here, make sure that everything is transparent so that the community is hearing, and we're watching that closely. Since, you know, our last meeting, I've continued engaging, especially with students. We so far, working with Kimberly, engaged hundreds of students actually during this time in an array of projects. They've shown incredible talent, whether it's 3D printing, face masks, and having hospitals demand them, you know, ask for them, or providing music to kind of comfort folks in this difficult time. They've really stepped up and shown incredible talent. I want to recognize that. And I've been very proud and honored to be able to work with them and support them in that. Twice a week, as many of you know, Thursdays and Sundays at 7:00 PM, I've been going live, trying to provide you all with FCPS updates, as best I know them, from what I'm hearing from staff, what's going on in my colleagues, what to expect in upcoming meetings, and trying to break down perhaps complex topics that are not always accessible in ways that the average person can understand. In addition to bringing on guests, we've had, you know, the Virginia Secretary of Education recently, and luckily, Rolling Valley Elementary School, as a result, had him feature in their class, in one of their classrooms, and he's been hopping around to classrooms. So I encourage you guys, if you're interested, teachers, staff, to bring him in. But that was a beautiful product out of our streams. We've had the Department of Family Services, who I committed to sharing a couple of pieces of information for our families who may be going through a tough time. There is a new parent support line. I'd highly encourage you, you know, 703-324-7720. That's a resource in multiple languages. Puedo tener ayuda en español también. And there is an email, buildingstrongerfamilies@fairfaxcounty.gov. They have support groups, tips, and even just a hotline to kind of discuss some of the challenges that you may be going through to help direct you to services that you may benefit from. And in addition to commonhelp.virginia.gov, which provides all sorts of resources, whether it's supplemental income, Medicaid, healthcare essentially at affordable rates during this tough time. And they've converted online, even their interviews are online now. So there have been changes since COVID. We have more information on that, of course, in my stream and more details on the resources, but I wanted to make sure I at least mention those. Today, we're going to have a conversation to follow up on the conversation with the Secretary of Education with the Policy Director at the Virginia Department of Education. Would encourage you all to tune in 7:00 PM on my Facebook page, and you do not have to have a Facebook account to join. So any of you can tune in. And I receive live questions during that period and try to answer what I know of and take note of what I can provide more information on in the following stream. Sunday, we're going to have a session on mental health specifically. We're going to have experts from Our Minds Matter, in addition to other professionals who will comment and provide specific resources and opportunities for families. So be sure to tune in if that's a topic of interest. And finally, we're upcoming, we're going to have a conversation with the presidents of all the senior class councils to discuss the matter of graduation, senior playing, and trying to think of ways to make this enjoyable and fun for all of you students out there who obviously are impacted by COVID. So I plan to have that call on Saturday. If you're a student, if you're a parent who knows your student is kind of going through a tough time as a result of this, please be sure, you know, they can reach out to their president's senior class council, and I'll be having an intimate conversation with them on Saturday, followed by a public livestream to collect thoughts and brainstorm with the county through the Facebook lives. And we'll be continuing, of course, through these livestreams to have guests, and we'll be doing an event with Chairman McKay and whatnot in the upcoming weeks. So I hope that you can tune in. As you all know, I look forward to being responsive, accessible to all of you, and working with my colleagues to really lead us through this tough time and lead us responsibly. So I appreciate all the engagement that's come up so far. Thank you again to all our teachers and staff for being the foot soldiers and at the front lines. And I'll see you all in the coming meetings and in my livestream.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. I also want to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and my deepest gratitude is extended to all our incredible educators in Fairfax County with a special little shout out to my children's teachers who are all so wonderful and invest in my kids every single day. I think during this time, all parents have found a renewed appreciation and understanding of exactly what it means to teach and the heart and the deep, you know, commitment that is needed and shown every day in our classrooms and the investment that our teachers make in the lives of our students that extend well beyond academic goals. So thank you to all of you. I honor you. I was able to attend the ACSD meeting this month as a liaison and heard from parents about some of the struggles and still questions that are surrounding our TLPs and our distance learning for our special education students. And I thank staff who is following up, taking the information and making improvements for our kids. So we are constantly improving the way we are meeting their goals during this time. And I also look forward to the town hall I will have with Ms. Cohen on March 21 at 7:30. So thank you all. Have a good afternoon.
Ms. Bukarski, that's May 21.
May, and, you know, like I said, did I mention how hard it is to be doing the teaching at home? In addition to everything else? No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Sizemore Heiser?
I thank you very much. And I just want to start by saying I sympathize with Ms. Bukarski on, I'm not quite sure what month it is either, and I don't think a lot of us feel that way. So I understand where she got there. So along with my other colleagues, I also want to just reiterate how grateful I am for our incredible teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week, both as a board member and as a parent. I've seen how wonderful the synchronous learning has been for my own kid and seeing his teachers and how wonderful they've been to reach out for them. It's been really great, actually, watching on social media to see our community rally around our teachers and the hard work. I know usually they'll be getting cards and gifts from our students, and that can't happen. So I love seeing all the virtual cards, the songs, the skits online. My son even made up a song for his teachers. And I also wanted just to say that I know we all have a renewed appreciation for what our teachers do, but I also have a renewed appreciation for how flexible they are and how hard they're willing to work to make everything work despite all of the incredible odds and changes. So, you know, I really just want to say I really appreciate them. And I see that not just are they doing the job that they anticipated doing, but they're doing a job they never anticipated doing and doing their best at it. I also want to just stop and thank our amazing students who are making projects to raise funds and doing community work even in these difficult times. I've seen students making soap and selling that, driveway concerts, making masks, and so much more. And I just think that it shows what great students we have in Fairfax County. I hope you all are continuing to stay safe and healthy. It was great to see that we had over 150,000 student teacher-led sessions and a million attendees. That connection is so important. I also want to talk a little bit about what I've been doing these last few weeks in addition to our meetings and our regular work. I've been hosting weekly town halls, Monday nights, 7:00 to 8:00 PM. And I, along with my colleagues here, take it very seriously, our responsibility to be transparent and available to you so we can hear from you, how to improve, and we can work with staff to share those concerns and work on continual improvement. So I thank all of you who participated in the weekly town halls. I did want to say I apologize for those who couldn't get in. I was not aware Blackboard had a 250-person limit and that Zoom had a 100-person limit. So for the last two weeks, in addition to using those platforms, I have been Facebook living as well and taking questions from both Facebook Live and those platforms, and we'll continue to do so. So people who can't get in can still participate via Facebook Live. I wanted to thank Dr. Brabran for coming last week to my town hall and answering questions. His time was much appreciated. I know the community appreciated it. I want to thank all the people who attend and all your passion. I'm also thankful to Stella Bukarski, Laura Jane Cohen, Elaine Tolan for coming on my town halls and taking questions and answering them with me. And I'll be asking additional colleagues if they're willing and able to join me in the future. I also wanted to thank Ms. Omeish and Ms. Boteng for including me there at Cornstein last Sunday. I was really grateful to be able to sort of walk through the budget presentation from previously and sort of at a high level. So thank you for that. I think it's great work to engage the community and the different groups you're bringing on. And I wanted to thank Budget Chair Megan McLaughlin for being willing to join me this upcoming Monday from 7:00 to 8:00 to discuss the fiscal year '21 budget as we work into public hearings and finalizing our budget. I'll also be sharing with you Monday night our update from the work session that day on the return to school scenarios that are presented to us, as well as options for summer and graduation updates that are presented to us that day. So if you can't follow along during the work session, I'll try to summarize it that evening. If you want the links to those, they're sent out through my newsletter. They'll be sent out Monday as well on my newsletter. You can go to the School Board page on the fcps.edu, and the links are there underneath my name to sign up for my school newsletter. I also tweet them out and post it on my Facebook page, so find me on Facebook. And I also, in addition to that, have my twice-weekly office hours, and the links to those are sent out via my newsletter as well. And if those don't work for you timing-wise, feel free to email me, and we can set up a different time to talk. I've also been trying to participate in as many committee meetings as I can just to really learn about the committee. So I'm grateful to my colleague, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, for allowing me to sit in on the Audit Committee Meeting and listen along. I also sat in on the ACSD meeting last night and listened to Ms. Bukarski about our concerns and our staff addressing those concerns. And I was grateful to our staff to take the time to answer questions and follow up. Next week, I'm thankful to Mr. Frisch for letting me sit in on the Governance Committee Meeting, and I'm looking forward to my own committee with Ms. Marin on public engagement. One thing that I've really seen over these last couple of months is the importance of robust public engagement and communication. So I'm excited to work on that through the Public Engagement Committee to improve our processes going forward. And the last thing I just wanted to say really quickly is that I echo my colleagues in saying that we are all eager to get back to summer school or return to school and especially to get back together physically. But it is really important to make sure we do it safely. And we do it in a way that recognize that not everybody's coming from the same place in terms of their own health or their family's health, and we take all of that into consideration. And same with graduation. I have a child who graduated a couple of years ago. I know how important that is, and I am very committed to trying to do something in person if we can do it safely. So stay tuned for more of that, but do know that we all do understand on the board the importance of not just graduation for our seniors, but our sixth grade promotion ceremonies and all of these other milestones that our students are missing. So with that, understand we are advocating for you. We do hear you. Please keep reaching out so we can continue to share your concerns. And to end with a happy Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak for all those celebrating, especially during these difficult times. I know Ramadan is often a time for your community to come together, and that is so difficult in this time of physical distancing. So I hope you are staying safe, staying well. Please keep reaching out. I'll see you all Monday night, and thank you very much. Take care, guys.
Ms. Sizemore Heiser. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you. And some of that has held several different types of jobs throughout my career, ranging from computer systems development and installation for international stock trading, management consulting, environmental project consulting, and classroom teaching and program management in education. I can say from experience that dedicated educational professionals work just as hard or harder than others with less resources and less pay. Their love for teaching and most of all, their love for children and young adults is what keeps them showing up every single day. That is why it's with great pleasure that I ask all of you to support and celebrate the work of our FCPS staff this week. They have given their all to teach our children, and even in this time, when we have asked them to transition to distance learning, they have stepped up and are doing what they can while managing their own children, homes, and sick relatives. To our FCPS staff, I cannot thank you enough. Now, if my colleagues and the public will bear with me, after extensive discussions with all of my board colleagues, a headline article today in the Sun Gazette, and many conversations with constituents, I feel I need to speak a little bit about McLean High School. After today, we are moving forward to put in a modular at the high school. The modular will replace some of the trailers that are currently on the site and will give our current students and staff a more comfortable and efficient learning space by providing additional bathrooms to the school and an environment that will provide for increased teacher and student collaboration. With teaching experience at a quad, a trailer, and a modular, I know this firsthand. We are still planning to scope a boundary change between Langley High School and McLean High School. There is considerable uncertainty around the capacity numbers for both of these schools with development projects in Falls Church, the McLean Capri-Hit Business Center, and other areas in the proximity, with both schools being in the proximity of the Tyson's area and the Silver Line and more. In addition, we now have the economic uncertainties of COVID-19 to deal with. In previous times of economic uncertainty, we have seen increased enrollment in public schools. I am in close collaboration with our FCPS staff and John Fowles Office to look at our development and enrollment figures in a holistic way. In order to not overcrowd Langley, but to give McLean as much relief as possible, this move needs to be carefully considered. The bottom line is, we cannot move enough students to Langley High School to fully alleviate the overcrowding at McLean. Regardless of how this boundary change progresses, McLean still needs a modular. As we proceed forward to determine the potential need for an addition for McLean, one that would take five to seven years perhaps to implement, we will put this modular to very good use. McLean High School is ranked number three academically in the state of Virginia, has a special education program that is renowned for its inclusivity, and it exhibits one of the most caring cultures I have seen across the district. We are continually seeing families moving into the McLean High School attendance area for these and other reasons. The school infrastructure is not supporting that. We need to do multiple things, short-term and long-term. I fully acknowledge for the broader community that McLean is only one of our top five most crowded high schools in the county. Three of those five high schools have major renovations underway, are coming up soon. And Chancilly, although in the same boat as McLean, already has a modular. So that is not a possible solution on the table for them. Facilities is working with these schools for other short-term and long-term solutions that will work for them. A letter will be sent to McLean and Langley Pyramid families tomorrow, updating them on this progress, and we will continue to be in touch as we determine the best way to deal with the public meetings we need to hold to gain community input around or other steps, the boundary scoping. I want to thank Idransville families, teachers, Espits and Principals for their constructive ideas and input around distance learning, technology, and health issues. I've gotten lots out of our conversations in the past weeks. Please keep the communication coming. Please see my Facebook page and sign up for my newsletter and for updates, and the link to sign up for office hours so I can continue to hear from you. My newsletter has a new section on what distance learning looks like in Idransville. I'm sure you will enjoy seeing some of the hard work and creativity of our families, students, and teachers. So take a look. Finally, as we come into the week for advanced placement testing, I wish the best to our high school students taking the tests under conditions they never imagined. Your hard work will pay off. Work with your teachers, stay calm, and good luck. Stay healthy and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. And I will conclude with very brief board matters because this board has additional personnel issues that we have to discuss enclosed. So first, I would like to start with a very warm, from the bottom of my heart, thank you to all of our teachers and staff throughout Fairfax County and in the Mount Vernon Magisterial District. I cannot thank you enough for the dedication and support that you have had to not only our Fairfax County public schools, but to the individual needs of each our Fairfax County public schools, but to the individual needs of each and every one of our children. I never thought that we would have an on-demand teaching, an on-demand approach to teaching, but that is what you've done with the asynchronous, synchronous learning. And then you have made sure that you have connectivity and that you are reaching our students individually through our asynchronous learning and through our, through your office hours. I cannot thank you enough. I can't thank you enough for the partnership that you have made between yourselves and the teach, the students and their parents to deal with this very difficult time that we're living in. And so, this year, more than any other, and I have been celebrating Staff Appreciation, Teacher Appreciation Week for over 25 years, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and thank you on behalf of this whole board. Over the past several weeks, I've been meeting with individual teachers, staff members, family members, as well as dropping in on PTA meetings and individual classrooms. And the work that you are doing at the school level is amazing. The creativity, the ability to do creative problem-solving amongst students and collaboration is, is wonderful. So, I thank you for that. And I also have been talking to many of you about the view for the future, and I want to echo what all of my colleagues have said and what you have said to me personally, which the safety of our students and staff must be foremost in our minds as we look at what to do next. And so, I know that when Dr. Braybrand brings his plans, not only for returning to school in the fall, but our summer programs and graduation and celebrations of our students being promoted or graduating, we will put safety and security of our students and families first. So, please be assured of that. Did want to also just give you all a heads up that I had the opportunity to speak on behalf of this board, to the Board of Supervisors, and in that presentation, I echoed many of the same concerns that were brought to us by our teacher associations this, this afternoon, and that includes that we are asking for the funding to ensure that we can maintain our classrooms to meet the very diverse and growing needs of our student population, that we are able to maintain all of our staff and increase social, emotional supports and technology supports in the event that we may have to either shut down individual schools or areas if there is a re, reoccurrence of COVID-19. We have also sent a letter requesting additional funding from our federal delegation to support these needs, including social, emotional supports, food and nutrition services, technology, and funding to address the needs of our students with disabilities, as well as those that will, to mitigate against the gaps that we are likely to see in the future. And finally, I would like to extend my very warm wishes, not only to my colleague, Ms. Omesh, but to the whole Muslim community and all those that celebrate Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak. And please enjoy this period of time with your families and friends, and know that this community is honored to have you as part of our, our community. So, thank you. With that, ladies and gentlemen, this part of the meeting is adjourned, and I am going to make a motion to go into closed meeting. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the performance, appointment, demotion, termination, discipline, salaries, and/or resignation of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, specifically personnel issues. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Dr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Frisch. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and I will recognize you. I have Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Marin, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Seismarheiser, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Corbett Sanders. That motion carries. We are going to close out of this session, and board members, I will meet you in the closed meeting room. Thank you.